...heart and in our mind because you are our strength and our redeemer. Father, we, we ask that you forgive us for the times every single day that, that we fail, that we fall short of the glory of God. But Father, help us as we strive to be more like Christ every day. And the five of us commissioners, as we strive to be the hands and feet of Jesus in Montgomery County. Give us strength, give us wisdom, give us power through your Holy Spirit to discern, to know what to do and when to do it. And Father, everything that we do will be done through mercy and love as we show peace and bring joy into our community all through the power of Jesus Christ. We thank you, we praise you. We ask you to continue to bless us, bless everyone in this room, Father. Protect us, protect us as individuals, protect our families, Father, from the powers and the principalities and the rulers of the darkness of this age that are seeking to kill, steal, and destroy our marriages, our families, our friends, our communities, Father. He who is in us is greater than he who is in the world, and we claim that, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did somebody say roll tide? What, come on, what? Let's have some respect for this chamber.
What did he say?
Roll tide.
War Eagle. Instead of amen, he said roll tide.
We'll call the roll. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
President.
Commissioner Walker.
President.
Vice Chairman Sankey. Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, first thing this morning, we do have a First Responders' Day proclamations for different groups. I know the Volunteer Fire Department Association, if there is anybody here, if you would come down. I know we don't have a sheriff here, but...
Why not?
A real sheriff, but Wesley, I guess you could come down. Don't start that. Sheriff Cunningham, you'll come down along with Wesley. EMA, I see my favorites back there. Montgomery Police is here today. Thank y'all, guys, y'all come down and Montgomery Fire. Y'all would come down. We do have proclamations for each one of you today.
Get you, they're here to get you.
But whereas the Homeland Security Act of 2002 defines first responders as individuals who provide life, evidence, property, or the environment during the early stages of emergency aid, aid, excuse me. Whereas according to the United States Department of Commerce, an estimated 4.6 million Americans serve and protect as career and volunteer firefighters, police, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics. Whereas in 2017, Congress designated October 28th as National First Responders' Day. I'm not going to continue with all the other whereas's, but I do just want to tell each and one of you and the agencies that you represent how much we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. You know, I left the house this morning, and I don't think my wife was wondering if I was coming back home tonight. Now Derek, don't say she's probably hoping I don't come home tonight, but she wasn't wondering if I was coming back home today. And I just can't imagine what your spouses go through every day wondering because you're willing to put your life on the line to protect me and my family, and we deeply appreciate that. So thank y'all. I think that deserves a standing ovation, crowd. A standing ovation. Thank you. Cruz, you're a retired firefighter, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, sir, thank you.
Cruz, how long you been retired? What? That's a lifetime. You can, you can still, you can, hey, you can still put me on your shoulders and haul me up a stair, flight of stairs.
Florence, we don't have any speakers today, so...
Nobody wants to talk to us today.
We got them early. We got them earlier.
They all came to the forum, to the informal session.
It's okay, I like speakers.
No, we all do.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2023.
Move approval.
Our second.
But I don't see the...
Once it comes up, our second, our second.
All right, here it is.
We might need to get a new, a new system, y'all.
Mine's here, y'all back out and back, go back in.
Yeah, you have to hit the little reset button on the top, recycle button. Who moved that, the commissioners?
I moved, but I don't have anything to move on.
Yes, nothing's still coming. I think it's, Dan, I think this is a conspiracy. We need to... I think it's against me and you because we always...
I moved it.
Yeah.
So moved.
See, it's still didn't come up.
You want to move forward, second?
You must don't see these thick glasses.
We're making little progress.
It's not coming up, Tammy. Tammy, I vote that we all get new iPads, new systems.
Carmen, and new cars and new interns. It wa, it's working for Isaiah and myself.
Well, see, I can't vote, this is, I can't vote for my district. This is something wrong, this is conspiracy.
And no chance that she use her error.
No, it's not. See, Doug, Doug took it.
I couldn't get it, you know, Tammy's working on it.
Tammy's working on it. Are you up?
I'm not up yet.
See, it's a conspiracy with me and Dan.
We could go back to the old way and just vote by show of hands.
We could. And get paper packets delivered to our homes.
Florence, you're trying to be funny. I tried to be funny.
No paper packets.
That's right, and we're going to have Florence drive them around and throw them out like newspapers.
You know, that's what we had before you came on the commission.
Oh, my God.
We had home delivery paper packets.
I thought some of you were behind, don't keep telling that.
But, no, I mean, you know.
I'm sorry, you guys, I'm here now.
It's not about what we used to do, it's about the progress that we've made.
I was going to say, I'm here now, and things around here going to change.
We don't live in the past, we're, we're advanced.
Is yours up yet, Dan?
Not yet.
Mine, I need to see, I told you this is something, Dan, we need to look into that.
Oh, I don't know what that is.
Did they get their update? Tammy? They didn't do it.
Well, you have to update.
It's not your fault, Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
It's a conspiracy, but I will vote for District 2.
While we are waiting, I will, I will make one announcement is that the Montgomery Whitewater is hosting the Haystack Festival on October 20th and 21st out at Montgomery Whitewater. And every Thursday night for 10 consecutive Thursdays, I think we own Thursday 5 or 6, there is a, it's a free concert at Montgomery Whitewater every Thursday night. I want to say it's like 6 o'clock to about 8 o'clock. We have a lot of times local bands come out, and we've had really good crowds. We've had 500 to even 2,000 people show up. We had over 5,000 for Labor Day weekend. So if you're not doing anything on Thursday night, bring a lounge chair and come out, and the weather's great, and enjoy Montgomery Whitewater. And then again, the inaugural Haystack, Haystack Festival is this coming weekend, October 20th and 21st at Montgomery Whitewater.
I have a calendar item, while we're still working on doing this right. So I have a calendar item. We have our upcoming events page that we got, commissioners. November, it's listed that November 2nd is the Montgomery Area Business Committee for the Arts luncheon. That has been postponed until the first quarter of next year, so strike that. And Florence, my second thing is a question. When we originally got our invitation to the Washington Brief with Katie Britt on November 3rd, it was listed as an 8:30 a.m. start, and this has an 8 a.m. start. Will you verify what, what the start time is for us, please?
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, so everybody but Carmen, have you voted for the presentation of the... Okay, now, motion carries.
Consider the accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a cooperative agreement for the state homeland security grant for the sheriff's office.
Move for approval.
Second. Isaiah, you can second it.
Motion carries.
Consider a cooperative agreement for the state homeland security bomb symposium grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider amendment number one to the contract with Chappie's Deli for the annual employee luncheon.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider property casualty workman's comp insurance renewal for risk management.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a memorandum of understanding with the administrative office of the courts to fund the court referee salary.
Move approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the following additions. For Hope Inspired Ministry, an appropriation of $2,000 each from Commissioner Harris, Walker, and Singleton, and an appropriation of $1,000 each from Commissioner Moore Ziegler and Vice Chairman Sankey. The addition of $1,000 to Neighborhood Services for the North Pass Homeowners Association from Vice Chairman Sankey. An appropriation of $2,000 each from Commissioner Walker and Chairman Singleton for the Liberty Learning Foundation. An appropriation of $5,000 from Commissioner Harris and $1,000 for Chairman Singleton to the Chamber of Commerce for the Lacy Boyd Parade.
Move approval. Maine, $5,000 to Maine for Commissioner Singleton.
I'm sorry, I thought that was designated.
Either one, if you left it dislocated like it is. That's fine, don't change it now. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of $1,000 from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to Sidney Lanier for the band program, and a correction of Chair, of Commissioner Harris's for Brubaker Tech for track team uniforms to $4,100.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of $2,000 appropriation from Commissioner Harris, $2,000 from Commissioner Walker, and $5,000 from Chairman Singleton for Maine.
Wait a minute, you had $2,000 from me for Maine?
What, what it was Rhonda and Dan's $2,000 for?
Was that?
That was Hope Inspired.
I apologize, I, my lines aren't...
But you're on designated now? I usually do my stuff out of agency, but it doesn't matter. Just want to make sure it's not taken out of both places. Because I thought we already did.
All right, let's... There was nothing for Maine.
Florence, if you would, repeat what we did out of agency. Can you repeat that real quick?
Out of agency for Hope Inspired Ministry, $2,000 from Harris, $1,000 from Moore Ziegler, $2,000 from Walker, $1,000 from Sankey, and $2,000 from Singleton.
Okay, so it didn't come out of designated?
Yes, that came out of the...
That was from agency.
Right, so now you're, you're calling the same thing for designated now? No, you said $2,000 for Maine. My $2,000, you had me down for $2,000 for Maine, I don't, I didn't do that.
Okay. So there was only $5,000 from Singleton for Maine, and I apologize.
That's okay. We, we, we're all talking at the same time over here.
And out of designated, $8,000 from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to the Chamber of Commerce for the Lacy Boyd Parade.
Dan, did you give to Liberty Learning?
Pardon?
Did you give to Liberty Learning? I gave, I gave two to, I gave two to Hope Inspired, and I gave two to Liberty, so I don't...
Correct, and that was all out of agency.
Okay.
Are you okay?
That's going to bother you, isn't it?
That's all.
It's very healthy.
All right, move approval. That's right.
Second.
Did you move?
Motion carries.
Consider a bid award to Donahoo Chevrolet for the sheriff's office.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider budget change request number one for county commission appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider travel training requests for community corrections, the county commission, detention facility, district attorney, engineering, and the sheriff's office.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
As a wave rule item, consider the 2024 Burn JAG Equipment Grant application through a DECA for the sheriff's office.
No objections, so moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider 2024 Burn JAG Program Grant application through a DECA for the district attorney's office.
No objections, so moved.
Second.
Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
I don't have anything to add.
Deputy Administrator?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the Carp Deck staff, Central Alabama Planning yesterday, as well as the Sheriff's Department for helping out with parking, our very own Regina Walker, the Sports Services Crew, and mostly the people. Yesterday, as you all know, we opened up the application period for the Critical Home Repair Program, and the people responded. And yesterday, there were people there as early as the night before waiting to get their application in. Yesterday, Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission received 500 applications for this program. That lets us know that the need is there and that people were excited about this opportunity to get something done. So they've received those applications, they will continue to receive applications, and, you know, Carp Deck will now review what they have received and move on to the next phase of that process. So I'd like to thank the commission for obligating ARPA funds to it, and I'd like to thank all of our departments and everyone who helped out in this effort to make this as, as easy a process as, as humanly possible for people to get those applications in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I'm just going to tag team with, with Kendall on, on the Critical Home Repair Program. I think it's, it's probably next to CareStar and what we did for the deputies. It's probably, in, in the sewer, of course, it's probably the most important thing that we did. I knew from the very beginning that it wasn't going to be enough money. We, we allocated, I think it was 2 million, and I think that we expected to reach 200 homes at $25,000 max per home. That's going to run out fairly quick. And my hope is that our grant department will, will get on it, and I know, I know Regina is, identifying funds to replenish this program. This is a program that I'd like to see go forward. It's, it's one of the ways that we're going to put dent, put a big dent in the blight in, in our cities. A lot of the blight has to do with the elderly living in homes that they can't afford to repair. And this is going to come in just right on time in order to do that. And I, I would hope that, for the most part, that's who we're targeting with this program. People who are living in homes that they own, fixed income, need a roof, just can't afford to have it done, and the insurance company won't do it. So my hope is that we could continue to fund it. I would hope that any funds that are unallocated, any ARPA funds that have been unallocated are those funds and not assigned, and, and the ones that have been assigned and not spent that'll come back to this commission. I hope that the commission would consider adding those funds to this project, to the Critical Home Repair, because it, it's, it is one that's much needed, and we're going to, this is something that we're going to see the results of, be able to see it when you drive through the neighborhoods. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moore Ziegler?
I guess I'm going to piggyback on the two of you. First of all, I want to thank our grants writer, Regina Walker, for the outstanding job she's done. I thank all of you for what you've done, but I exceptionally want to thank her because she traveled with me down to our great little area of Pentlala, Doug, and when we had the Critical Home Repair, and there was not an empty seat in Montgomery County down in that area. And I preach so long that, you know, Montgomery County, the rural part of Montgomery County, has said they've been forgotten about. And so I want to make sure that they understand that we are not, they're no longer going to be forgotten about. And I echo what Commissioner Harris said. I hope that we're going to need more money for this program. And we've got to sit down with our grants writer, support our grants coordinator, and find more money for this program. I agree with, up with that 100%. I also would like to congratulate the new city council person, Ms. Frenette O'Reilly. I look forward to working with her in our district to make our district great. It's always, it's already good, but I want to make it greater and better than what it is, and I look forward to working with her to do that. Again, my hat's off, and I'm sorry, Kendall, my hat off to you for sitting up everything for me down there in Pentlala. I appreciate it every day, that, the things that you guys do to make us great, because without you guys, we cannot be successful in, in what we do. So, that's all.
Commissioner Walker?
I haven't had the opportunity, Carmen, you mentioned Ms. Riley, who just won the city council seat. I own a business in her district, and she, after she got elected, she was just riding around her district and stopping in and visiting, and she stopped in to our business to introduce herself. So I'm, I'm enthusiastic about that level of involvement and, and work that she's going to put in. Oh, but I want to talk about, I want to talk about the fair. Who went to the fair this year? Raise your hand if you went to the fair this year.
I worked the booth at the fair.
I did too.
The Montgomery County Commission booth.
So I, I, I know I'm stealing Doug's thunder on this, but thank you Chairman Singleton and Sheriff Cunningham, both Kiwanians and deeply involved in the fair. I love the fair. I'm, I moved to Montgomery, I think, in 1976 about, and I've gone to the fair every year since then. So I love it, I took six teenagers there this week. Wonderful event, so important for the community, all of central Alabama. Just a fun thing to do. So thank y'all, and I understand it was another very successful fair. So it's a lot of work. Y'all do a great job, thank you.
And I forgot to say thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff and I got a chance to perform with Genuine, in case some of you didn't know.
I didn't get asked. Wait a minute, did, now... Did you have, I had my annual corn dog, did you have a corn dog?
I did not, I was too busy performing with the sheriff in Genuine.
I want my invitation next year, Sheriff. All right, that's, I'm done.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Sankey?
Yeah, I want to say that I enjoyed the fair too. However, I did not get my parking pass.
He's going to burn the place down.
Did anyone get towed away? I don't think anybody got towed away, did it?
I don't think so. I don't have any records of it.
Also, Kendall said some people got towed away.
I'm disappointed to hear that. The fair was great, we went on a Sunday evening from 2:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. My wife said it was just the right crowd, you know, not too crowded, you know, just enough people. So had a great time with my grandkids. I also want to talk about the Critical Home Repair. I've been advocating for elimination... I've been advocating for elimination of blight, the vacancy, the abandonment, uh, that's associated with that for a number of years, and I'm, I'm happy to see that we're finally, uh, doing something with the American Rescue Plan funds as it relates to Critical Home Repair. I understand there were some seniors in line, uh, well, somebody told me that they actually got in line the night before about 9:00 p.m., and I understand their number came around 4:00 a.m. in the morning, and the weather was not really that conducive to being in line. Uh, it was a little chilly, and that happens in October. Uh, so I, I'm just happy to, to, to know that the program's underway, and this is the first expenditures, as far as I'm aware, for the real communities, for the historically disadvantaged communities, and for the, those communities that are historically underserved. Most of the zip codes are from, for the people who applied, I believe, are in those communities, and just happy to know that we're actually, finally, after two years, we're putting some money from the American Rescue Plan in some of those historically underserved and disadvantaged communities. Uh, and hopefully, I know we started off during the early phase of our discussion some two years ago, there were 5 million that was supposed to be going to Critical Home Repair. Somehow, through some process, it ended up being 3 million. Hopefully, we can get that back up to at least the minimum of 5 million. Uh, we put a number of dollars in other areas, uh, and I think that as we improve our housing structure, we're gonna improve health outcomes, and we also, when we improve housing structure, we improve the conditions of our neighborhoods, and that also help contribute to the tax basis. And so, uh, want to continue to, to do what we can with this money, uh, to address, uh, the, the negative impacts of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your kind comments, uh, about the fair. Again, Sheriff Cunningham was president. He did okay job. Um, he had a good vice president, uh, so next year's gonna be even better, I can promise you, but, uh, just a couple of, uh, just a couple of announcements. I mentioned about the, uh, Whitewater functions that's going on. Uh, remind the commissioners that today at noon, right, Jimmy, noon today, at the County Extension Service Annual Report, October 31st, the Sheriff's Office Foundation has the Halloween Spooktacular at the Garrett Coliseum. It's always a huge, huge event. Uh, the community really comes out. Thank you, Sheriff, for wearing your costume today for us, and I appreciate that. But I encourage y'all to come out and, uh, and, and just witness the amount of people that show up for this, and commend the Sheriff's Department for doing that. If there's not anything else, yes, sir?
The Spooktacular, uh, Sheriff, last year, KASI had 1,500 packages, and they were there, they, they were able to be there until the end. This year, our goal is 3,000. So come one, come all.
Derek, are you gonna drive through again? Is it gonna be a drive-through again?
It's drive-through, but we, we're gonna have 3,000 packages passed out, passed out, in addition to whatever else is there.
Am I gonna be the only commissioner working it again this year? I didn't see the rest of you last year.
I was out there taking some pictures.
I'm putting my time in, y'all. It's time, it's time for you.
I throw a Halloween party for my kids at the house on Halloween every year, so.
That would be fun to throw it there, wouldn't it?
But then I couldn't trick or treat in my neighborhood, and it's my favorite thing to do. It's trick or treat.
And John, I apologize, I will not be there on the 26th. I'm so sorry, I have a reception that I've committed to. Uh, actually, for me, I have to go to that for sure, but. Oh, tonight? At St. John's, okay. 6 o'clock for the car. Can I get a motion to, uh?
We're going to recess into the conference room.
Is that, are we recessing into executive session, or?
No.
Or just into information? Okay.
We're recessing, and adjourned in there.
Okay, we'll have a motion to adjourn upon completion of the information session.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.